All right, okay. Commissioners, welcome. We want to welcome everyone here today. We're just a few minutes behind, but we're going to get this meeting started and lead it off with the invocation led by Commissioner Wayne Neal and the pledge led by Commissioner Alan Booker. If you rise.
Let's pray. Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for the way that you love us. We thank you, Father, for this great country and for the privileges and opportunities that it presents. We just continue to remember our fallen as we have just celebrated Memorial Day. Let us, let us remember them in our hearts year-round. We thank you for their service and their dedication, their sacrifice. Pray that you would be with us through this meeting. Let us ask for discernment and sound judgment, and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge of reasons.
Truthful lie. Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Commissioners, I need a, I need a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move to add item two, the published agenda to consider approving the assurance agreement form to approve a partnership with the Georgia Ayers Property Law Center for the 2019 USDA grant submitted with no financial commitment from Glen County.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signal five or raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Now, that's item two on the agenda, and now I'm going to move item two up to item one, and we're going to get item two out of the way before we do the budget. So, Pam, you want, Pam, are you doing?
Oh, sorry. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. As you know, we've received some, or planning to receive some CDBGDR funds for damages to homes caused by Hurricane Irma, Tropical Storm Irma, and DCA has put us in contact with the Georgia Ayers Property Law Center. They are a foundation that helps clear titles for people that historically may have issues. It's a family home, somebody passed away without a will, and now it might be 20 grandchildren later, they're trying to straighten out who can do it, and you have to have the title worked straight before you can participate in these improvement programs. So, Georgia Law Center reached out to us, and there's a USDA grant that would provide money to them to come down and train stakeholders in our community. So, we would be able to better educate homeowners, see who is falling into that potential category, and get them to the law center for help. DCA is paying the law center during this CDBG program to clear the title for those participants, but this would train us to better get them there quicker through the process. There's no financial obligation to us. This is us agreeing to be in a partnership with them on this grant, and I do believe it would also help our county staff in particular because we also have property heirs rights issues in our CHIP program and in our abandonment and condemnation program. So, again, we are requesting that you authorize this partnership and the chairman to execute the paperwork, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner, any questions?
No, Mr. Chairman, I believe myself and Commissioner Quinn were at the land bank meeting where they did a great presentation on the services they provide, a total agreement with this. This is a great opportunity for us.
Good opportunity. No cost. Don't cost. Costs to somebody, but none of those.
Even better.
Okay, well, someone want to make a motion?
I move that we accept the agreement with the Georgia Ayers Property Law Center as presented by staff.
Second. I've had motion, second, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, signal five or raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Pam. Now, we've got item one, FY '20 proposed budget. Who was, you got that?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Hope everyone has a budget memorized by now. So, typically, at this point, we have a few things in addition to go over with you than your meeting last week. Last week was more or less an overview of the budget document, and then we wanted to get into a few more details today, and I'm sure you probably have some questions to ask as well. So, part of the budget process, and when I submit the proposed budget to you, at that point, it really becomes, you know, your budget to do with how you'd have it. And so, there's part of the process. Again, you have at least one work session, maybe decide after today that you need additional work session, but then you'll have one public hearings required by law for the budget adoption. Now, sometimes people think, well, I remember more public hearings than that, and what they're referring to is in July before you set the millage because of the inflation and digest and how it's calculated. We're required to have three public hearings because technically according to state statute, it's a tax increase when you have inflation, but, you know, our goal is to keep the millage the same, but you have to have three public hearings, so that happens in July. To adopt this budget, you're only required to have one public hearing, and that's scheduled for June 6th, and then adoption is scheduled for June 20th. As I mentioned last time, we start the budget process in November. Departments, they submit the operating budget to us in January. So, that was four or five months ago, and during that time, things changed. And, for example, you know, there may have been an item in the budget because we usually go by what's spent, what's not spent, then everything's spent in it, then we find out later, once the departments get their budget, look at it, that we didn't budget enough money for next year. So, there are some items on this sheet before you. I hope everybody's seen the items for discussion sheet, and so we'll go over that, too. But in the budget, as was stated in the transmittal letter, there is a 2.5% cost-of-living increase for employees. There's not a merit increase in the budget this year for employees simply because lack of revenue. We didn't identify enough revenue. A merit increase is around a million dollars, and we just didn't have the revenue for the merit increase. Few years ago, the county provided a merit increase but not cost of living, and that caused us to get way behind in the market. And so, it's real important every year to not only provide the employees a cost-of-living increase, but also move the ranges up. So, we have grades for each position, and those grades will move up by 2.5% too to try to help us stay competitive in the marketplace. Any questions about the COLA? Okay. I've asked Ms. Reed to come up. We have included in the budget, as we do each year, reclassifications for a few positions and career track, and she's, Ms. Reed's going to go over those with you.
Good afternoon. Laura Reed, Human Resources Manager. Just going to cover the reclassifications and the career tracks. And I do have a copy of the presentation for everyone. Do you want a copy, or do you just want to look at the screen?
You guys okay?
Good with the screen? Okay. All right. So, reclassifications. I wanted to define reclassifications and the process that we use to determine whether or not a reclassification is warranted. So, reclassifications is an assignment of a position to another great level in the class and comp plan. The factors that we consider are significant material changes that appear to be ongoing in the position, duties and responsibilities, and the level of complexity, decision-making authority, and the scope of the position. And then also whether or not the current classification specification or the job description no longer accurately identifies the required knowledge, skills, and abilities and special qualifications to perform the job, the position's duties. Things that we don't consider are an employee's length in service or with the organization or the department, quality of the employee's work, the volume of the work or the changes in the volume of work, their current rate of pay, special training that's unrelated to the job, the employee's dependability, the employee's job performance, or comparison to the work of other employees, and then employee's personal qualification and experience that's not related to the, to the job. So, the factors are really about what the job is about, not particularly the employee's performance. The review and analysis may result in one of the following determinations: that a classification remains at the same grade level, but the classification specification may be updated, that the classification moves to a higher grade level or to a lower grade level, or that the classification affects then another classification within the department that results in the change of the, in the grade level for the affected position. We received, I think it was 28 requests for reclassifications for this year, for fiscal year '20. You can see them up on the screen. Two from administration, one from finance, 18 from the property appraisal office. When I say 18, I mean 18 employees. There are not that many different job titles in the department, but it was 18 employees that were, would have been affected. One for state court solicitor, four for the clerk of superior court, and that's one job for employees. One for the police department, one for 911, and then two for recreation and parks. We're recommending the approval of eight reclassifications. That's in the administrator's office with the public communication position, both of the positions, in the finance department with the purchasing agent or purchasing manager's position. In the property appraisal office, we're not recommending reclassification, but we are recommending that those employees move through the career track program that's in place for those positions. For the state court solicitors' office, we are recommending a reclassification. For the clerk of superior court, we're recommending that they create a career track progression, and one has been, a draft is in place for that. For the police department, we are recommending a reclassification for that position. For 911, also for, we're recommending a reclassification, and for the two positions that are in recreation and parks, for a total of $18,727 for reclassifications. Any questions about those?
The reclassifications for recreation, which positions I can't see that.
Okay. It's here. It's for one administrative technician. We're recommending that that position be reclassified to an administrative assistant, and then for one recreation program coordinator, then that position to be reclassified to a recreation program manager. Any other questions about reclassifications?
Any questions?
All right, so the career track program, it was a program we implemented several years ago that allows employees to advance in their career based on meeting established criteria for their respective job classifications. This means that they don't have to, it's not a competitive promotion. We have criteria set up, and those employees will move from level one to level two to level three, or however many levels are in their career track progression. The benefits for a career, of a career track program is that it does attract and recruit, help us attract and recruit talented employees, does help with retaining staff, you have the investment of a well-trained workforce, and then you have employees that are valued and feel valued and motivated. There were, I don't know if you can see everything on that. 167 requests for career track promotions, and all of those are recommended for approval because those career tracks are set, are in place, and the employees have done the work to, to move to the next level. The total cost for that is $355,231. And you can see all of that on the screen. And I, like I said, I've got the presentation for you if you want to have that to look at later.
If you would, sure.
Any, any questions on the career track promotions? Or anything I said? This is a very brief presentation. I just wanted to give you that, that information. Thank you.
Pardon?
Is she done?
Yes, sir. Do you have a question for?
Well, I just wanted to get a, for instance here.
Yes, sir.
I'm just, I'm just picking one, so I'm not picking on anybody, but clerk of superior court. Is that five positions?
Is that for reclassifications or?
Yeah.
Yes. Of a career track, yes, yes.
I mean, I mean, I mean career track.
Yes, there were five.
Okay, so that's, that 13707 is for five.
Five positions, right. So, yeah, so if you see each position, it's got a number by, that's the number of employees that will receive a reclassification. And those reclassifications are timed throughout the year, so if you look at 911, the number, the dollar amount looks low, but that's because those employees won't reach their, complete the criteria until, I think, maybe June of 2020. So, there's only one month's impact in the budget for next year.
Well, I'm looking at a E911, you got, looks like five people, 772 bucks.
Right, that's the one that I was just talking about. That they're only going, it only impacts the budget for one month.
Now, is this an adder to?
It's already.
Oh, okay, it's already in there. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got a question?
No, that was my question.
Well, I, just some clarification on.
Yes, sir.
Career track promotions. How, so the supervisors decide on who's in this career track?
They don't decide on who's in the career track. There are certain positions in the, in the pay plan that are career track positions: police officers, firefighters, some of the clerical positions. So, if you look at a pay plan, you'll see like an administrative assistant one. If there's a one by it, then there's a two. So, those positions are career track positions. So, the employees that are hired into those positions should be given the career track criteria once they come onboard, then they start working towards that criteria. It's not only, you know, education and experience in the job, but, you know, longevity also. So, you say if an employee meets that criteria, by the, you know, by the, whenever they meet the criteria, they will get the salary increase and the job title change.
So, all the positions are not?
No, not all positions are career track.
Okay, give me an example of a position that's not in the career track.
Department heads are not career track.
Commissioners, maintenance.
Commissioners. Maintenance worker, not yet, but that should be in the works. Let's see.
I guess my thinking would be, so, is there some feeling about the employees not in career track versus the positions, or maybe nobody knows?
Well, they should know. They should know. They should know that. They, they should know if they're in a career track position or not. All positions are not, don't lend themselves to a career track, the department head does not, you know, what, does not.
I'm not concerned about somebody at the top of the ladder, but if you're talking about a career track, then entry level and then the opportunity for advancement is what I believe the essence of this is.
It is, and most entry-level positions are. Most, but there are some that are not, like Dave just mentioned, maintenance worker, but we're working on that. A male clerk is a part-time position, but there's no career track for it that it could be. I think recreation specialist, that's the lowest, isn't that the lowest level? The entry-level position for, for the Recreation and Parks Department, but there is no career track for it yet. They're working on that. But most positions do have it.
You know, I guess, you know, in good times, employees that have the career track, they could also look at having a pay raise. At the pleasure time, we could do a pay raise plus a COLA, plus career track, and even maybe could have a position reclassification at some point in time if they're taking on more duties or.
That's possible.
So, there's potential opportunities.
Yes.
Even if, even if someone's sitting in a job that they started 10 years ago, the same job, same position, maybe it was a $30,000 job, it could be, you know, with career track, cost of living, pay raises, depending on, that's job reclassification. I say job, you know, scope changes in a job.
Right.
So, it could, over time, it could impact on where that pay is.
Correct.
If you're looking back where they began with it.
All right. All right, any other questions? Thank you.
Next item that I wanted to discuss with the board is today's handout. The second page is a letter from Chief Magistrate Judge Wallace Harrell. And as you know, Judge was appointed in his position after Judge Atwood was, received a state appointment. And at the time, the Judge Harrell was appointed, there were four deputy magistrates, and the budget for the four is $40,000 a year. Each deputy magistrate, as I understand it, receives $10,000 a year. And what Judge Harrell has requested is that we not fill the fourth deputy position, and in lieu of that, that we take the allocation of the $40,000 and divide it among three so that in doing so, the amount per deputy magistrate would go from $10,000 a year to $13,333 a year. And, and that's a request, and he's indicated in his letter that he has no plans to fill the other deputy position. Judge is here today, if you'd like him, ask him any questions.
I'm very excited to answer any questions you might have.
But staff certainly supports the request.
Judges, or anything you want to add?
No, it, I appreciate y'all considering this. It's a level, financial people call it financial neutral or something like that. It's the same money, but just divided among two people, started four. I talked to each of the management board judges to see if they would like to do this, and they did. they did. It means a little bit more work for all of us because we don't have that full spot. We are grateful to that, and, and that's what they would like to do. I'm the one that brought it up to them, and they were, they're much at bay with it, but it gives them a raise. And I hope she is, do that, answer your questions that you might have.
Uh, so you don't see, uh, foresee, uh, the workload getting, uh, too overbearing that in six months, you're gonna ask for this position back?
No, no, that's not gonna happen. You know, one, they got a chief judge that's hardworking.
Okay.
And, uh, the other judges are hardworking.
Yeah, I, I know one of them, I know she is.
We really have a great, great group of judges, I think, that we have. I think they do a great job. And this does give them praise, which I, when I was part-time, I, I thought to myself, I sure would like to make a little bit more money than I made. I'm sure y'all feel the same way. It's your job. Anyway.
No, we get, we get paid enough, we just, we just would like to do a little less.
I see that.
That's, yes.
Just thank you.
Well, well, Judge Harrell, we, we appreciate all you're doing over there, and like the magistrate judges do.
Thank you, Judge Harrell.
Well, see what we can do. Commissioners, y'all have any? Portman on this?
Alan. Not bad.
Okay, good. All right. Not even a little.
Right, thank you. Last Friday, I had an opportunity to meet with Commissioner Jeff Chapman. And Commissioner Chapman, uh, discussed with me, um. His, uh, continued analysis of taxpayers in Glen County and some possible discrepancies, uh, such as there may be a, a married couple and, uh, houses in the, in the, in the family in Glen County or another county. They're both claiming Homestead exemption, Scarlett Williams, but they only should have one exemption. And, uh, he, he believes in his analysis that there are many examples of this. He believes that, uh, if he had staff devoted to just this issue, a- as well as some other discrepancies, I just, just mentioned one, that the revenue each year, annual revenue, would be in addition, over a million dollars. And I asked him, I said, Commissioner Chapman, do you believe that this is sustainable? You know, do you think this is one-time revenue, or do you think this is sustainable from year to year? He said there, there wasn't a question in his mind that it's sustainable. And, uh, in, in the, his original budget request, which was indicated on TAD-B in, in this book, there's a list of all the requested positions. And he, he did request one and a half positions for this purpose in the budget. And we, you know, took the position not to recommend any positions, just from a revenue standpoint. Well, you know, without seeing how things go for a year, I would, I would not suggest we increase the budget by a million dollars. But I do think it makes sense to provide the one and a half positions. And let him, um, let Commissioner Chapman take this and go with it. And I, I asked him, I said, well, Commissioner Chapman, I said, if, if this doesn't turn out, I said, are you willing to give the positions up? Are you, you know? He said, absolutely. I'm, I'm willing to, to give the positions up, uh, but, uh, he was very confident that this, uh, this would be sustainable, but he needs the additional, uh, position and a half to, um, to perform this analysis and collection of these taxes. And so on the bottom of the page before you, um, and I've got to verify that number, I'm not sure that's the correct number, but, um, the fifty-eight thousand, gotta go back and check that, but, um, my recommendation at this point is that we include in next year's budget the one and a half positions to, uh, go through this analysis and, uh, and try to reclaim the, uh, the taxes that are rightly owed Glen County. I'm sure Commissioner Chapman can much more eloquently speak to this issue than, uh, than I can because it's, it's near and dear to him, but I've tried to convey to him what, what he expressed to me.
Yeah. Yeah, I think Commissioner Chapman understands his office probably as well as any tax commissioner ever has. And, uh, if he thinks, you know, they're under, underhanded and it's costing us revenues that should be collected, uh, under his proposal, I'm for it. You know, if you guys have any great questions about it, we can get him up here, but I think it's a pretty straightforward proposal. He's, uh, what I understand, can bring in a million dollars or more out there a year at best.
I'm sure he's gonna do it, but if we do approve this, and I, I don't necessarily, I don't have any issues with approving it, is there any way to make sure that we can calculate the benefits from these positions? I mean, I, I feel that's probably what's gonna happen, but I just want to state that that, you know.
Commissioner Chapman?
I asked him, I asked Commissioner Chapman the same question. Uh, we had that conversation, I apologize for not mentioning it, but he said that he could provide reports, um, to indicate how the process is going.
Commissioner Quinn has a question, how we, how we can verify. tracked it.
Absolutely, yes. We can differentiate and show exactly how, what they're producing, uh, so that you validate that it is, you know, getting the return on your investment. Uh, that was, there's a couple of back taxes that will have to be paid, will have that number separate, and then the add to the, to the digest, the actual dollar amount. This has kind of been something, it's, it's not urgent, but it's very important, and it's kind of the, the increase in TAD title, the increase in property and exemptions. We're doing over two hundred and twenty-seven thousand transactions there in the tax office annually, ninety-one percent of them are in any area. So, uh, this has just kind of got pushed to the side, and it, and it's, uh, it's, uh, just way too much. It, it, the, the digest, those numbers need to be maintained. We have death, marriages, divorce, change of properties, uh, and then we have people that are simply falsifying their information or not, uh, letting us know that they're now renting the property, uh, that they have, you know, senior exemptions, probably Williams freeze. And, uh, we, so yes, we can provide you accurate information to, to validate what we're saying.
Thank you.
You have to.
Thank you. Okay, y'all good on this? Okay.
Very good, thank you. Next item, uh, deals with capital expenses. And, uh, the board asked us to identify a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build new pickleball courts. And we've identified that to come from the capital projects fund balance. Uh, so, so that, um, is there for you. We'd be glad to answer any questions you may have, but, um, but we've identified the funds, and good to go.
Well, I personally would like to thank you for identifying the funds. It's, uh, it's certainly generated a great deal of interest. I don't know if you've gotten any emails.
You, you think you got them all?
I know, I know who got them, I can read the, the, the rest of them. But, uh, you know, this, this is a good problem to have. It just reflects, we've got a very active, vital community that wants to get out and use our resources. We're blessed to have multiple parks, and, uh, thus far, I think we're planning on putting in, you know, the first deployment of pickleball courts in a centrally located park. We, I know you've stated we haven't, you know, verified for absolute certainty where we're gonna put it, but at least identifying the money takes us to that next level, and I thank you very much for doing that.
Yes, sir.
That really is fabulous. And on behalf of St. Simon's and Glen County, because these are not all just St. Simon's residents, they're Jekyll Island, Brunswick, mainland, they're just seeing to congregate over here, and it'll, it'll not only provide a, an area for them to, to pursue this, but it also, I think, takes a burden off the tennis group that, that up to the present time, and until these courts are, are deployed, you know, have this confusing array of lines on their courts and, and different groups of people sort of getting multi-use purposes out of courts that really should be only designated for one sport. So, again, on behalf of all these Glen County athletes, thank you.
You're welcome. I certainly understand, it's like on the basketball court, you have the volleyball lines that sort of mess up the basketball court.
Or, how about this? You, you play full-court basketball, and then have somebody shooting on the, the side basket and playing a half-court game on there? It'd be very similar. The good thing is the tennis and pickleball usually aren't played at the same time, right? So anyway, we, we feel your pain, and we're trying to make it better.
Yeah, thank you.
I think most of you know our grants, coordinator Monica Harden, and, uh, she's up to it again. Uh, in two thousand and seventeen, she applied for a grant, uh, after IRMA for generators, and we found out this week that we were awarded a grant, uh, what, four hundred thousand? Three, three fifty, four hundred thousand?
Total cost is three twenty-four, and that's a forty-eight thousand dollar local match, two seventy-five.
Which is excellent. She, she does amazing work. And, uh, the, the, uh, this would be a generator for fleet maintenance, for traffic maintenance, and for, uh, Station One, the fire department. But like I said earlier, since the budget, you know, is always moving, I mean, even once you adopt it July first, I mean, it continues to move throughout the year, and that's why, once a quarter, we bring different budget adjustments to you. But this was, was something we, you know, did not, uh, know about, and so we're requesting that the budget be amended to, uh, include the forty-eight thousand, as Tamara said, for the, uh, the match for the generators.
Are these generators, uh, on trailers? Can they be towed, or are they on skids?
We believe that they are placed permanently at locations.
Oh, oh, okay, I got you.
Yeah, the grant was specific as the location.
We had to send pictures of the location and where it was gonna be and all of that. Had to get an electrician to say that.
These are, these are the furnished power to a, to a building.
Right.
In the case.
And what are the buildings?
The fleet maintenance building, the traffic maintenance building, and the fire department one.
Do we have other buildings with generators already located by?
These are not out there, sir. Now, we were in the process of working on the, uh, generations for the fire stations, but we had some challenges. And we, we haven't finished that.
I wonder if this is something we can do after annually?
We're gonna do it, yes, sir.
It's the hazard mitigation, so she said we can try to apply for additional funds again.
Any, any others? You ready to move on? Bob, you ready to move on? That's it.
The next, uh, area of discussion is operating. I think I mentioned this last week, but, you know, once we get the document final for the budget, we send it out to departments for them to look at, and, uh, we hear back from some, and some we don't. But the, the few that we have heard back from, uh, the sheriff, two items, uh, the car wash, uh, needs to be increased by thirty-five hundred. And then, uh, funding for replace, uh, the.
What's it?
Bulletproof vests was not included, that's seven thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. State court bailiff fees, twelve thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. The third page is a letter from Judge Altman that I received yesterday, no, um, Tuesday.
Bailiffs per diem rate, is this what they receive when they work a day? Nothing else?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, so it's not called pay, it's called per diem?
And so Judge Altman is requesting that, uh, the state court bailiffs be increased to the same rate as the superior court bailiffs that were approved, uh, previously.
What, what do the bailiffs do, you know?
They assist with, with court duties, they escort juries, they, um, make sure that the public is seated where they're supposed to be seated, just try to keep general, uh, oversight, uh, over the court, and basically extra set of hands to, to help out where's needed.
Okay, and so they work for the court, not the sheriff?
That's correct. Uh, y'all have any problems? Are you done with that?
With state court, I have a couple of other things. Uh, animal control, immunization, uh, uh, need an additional thousand dollars, and the reason for this is we were fully staffed when we developed the budget. Four vacancies? We have currently four vacancies, and what, once we fill those positions, they need to be immunized against rabies.
So we lost four people since you all started the budget process?
Yes, sir.
Not from illness?
No, different reasons.
On, on the, on the budget page right here, it's showing, uh, there was a twelve thousand dollar decrease in the budget for animal control. Uh, how, we're gonna give them a thousand dollars here for personnel, for immunizations?
Yes, sir.
And then where did the decrease come from? And we're four people short.
Commissioner Coleman, it's, it's my understanding, and Ms. Downs can, um, help me out where I, I don't include everything, but it's my understanding that since Tiffany has been there, she has gone through the budget very carefully and diligently and, and, uh, saw where she didn't, did not need, uh, the funding that she had, so, uh, she cut back. That was Tiffany's request, she cut back in different areas where she found a way to save money or didn't, didn't need the extra funds.
Do you feel like, do you feel like that our, uh, close to fifty percent reduction in personnel out there lately, uh, might have something to do with their pay rates? Uh, I'm just.
I'm, I'm not sure about two. The two were personnel issues, um, and, and they were terminated, I, I don't remember the other two, but, um, can you speak to the pay issue out, Mr. Coleman, I? Ms. Downs, come up and see if she can address your question.
Um, yeah, no, we actually have those four open positions, we had interviews this week, and, um, we've, we've had candidates apply for it, so people are interested in the position, it's just a matter of all these kind of happened at once, so.
I mean, I've just noticed over the years, you know, you have, especially the last one, four, five years, we've had a pretty good turnover out there. And, you know, and I, I don't, uh, and, and I'll be the first one to tell you, it takes a certain breed of person to, to do that job, you know, just like a police officer or fireman or whatever, you, you gotta, you gotta like what you do, and, and, but at the same time, I feel like that you, you also, uh, it's gotta be, gotta be something, not only that you like to do, it's gotta be something that's worth. gotta be something, not only that you like to do, it's gotta be something that's worth the while. And that's why I was coming up with this. We took, you know, 12 grand out of there, it's not a lot of money, but when you, you know, spread it out amongst the folks that we desperately need to hang in there with us when times get tough, 12 out of $1,000 is not a lot of money.
No, it's my understanding and from what I've heard from human resources and also in talking with, you know, the folks at animal control, the people that we've hired, and gauging that with what vets are paying for veterinary technicians, our pay rates are very, very competitive.
Also, the $12,000 did not come from salaries?
No.
That was from operating costs that were cut. So their salaries were not reduced, they were actually increased with the COLA.
So the immunization deal right there, that's not necessarily...
That's part of the operating budget.
Right, right, that's just another, some add-on to that particular project or...
And that's for rabies vaccination. It's rather expensive, and as Mr. Hours referred to, we had just vaccinated everybody this year, and then we lost those four, so we've, that's for, you know, four people to be vaccinated. It's rather costly.
Sounds like we were operating more efficiently.
Absolutely. I think, you know, Tiffany had the opportunity to, she's been here for a full budget year now, and she really the true cost of running the shelter.
And Tiffany's also done a great job at getting donations from the community in food and supplies and grants.
Yeah.
So that has helped as well.
Yep.
I've asked Tamara to cover the next two items.
Um, the library, they have, in past budgets, had a courier. They just got a new contract, and the cost went up. When we prepared the budget, we didn't have the cost, so this $6,500 increase is the increase in the contract cost for the library courier that carries books back and forth between Brunswick and St. Simon's. I believe they do three to four times a week. And we don't approve their contracts, they don't go through our board, they go through their board, so this was just something I found out since we prepared the budget.
Will we fund it? Will we fund it? What was the, that's an increase in?
Right.
What, do you know what the...
Um, I'll get that number for you in just a few minutes. I don't remember what the original was.
I'd just like to look over Matthew Berman's shoulder one, please.
All right, I'll go ahead and address the next one, I'll come back to that, that original cost, if that's okay. The drug court grant, we received the award this week, and we received $6,175 more than we budgeted for, so rather than bringing a budget amendment back after the first of the year, we just are gonna include it in the original budget with your approval. And there's no increase in expenditures, this is just an increase in revenue.
Makes sense.
Are there any questions about the operating items listed here? Okay. Then, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, there are three items that I felt like was important to have some additional discussion on. One is the fire fund, and each of those, Tamara's gonna discuss in a minute. We had to use fund balance for next year to balance the fire fund, and because of that, I want to make sure you understand the reasons why. There were some questions about debt service. In fact, this goes back to your board retreat in February, and I think I mentioned that we would be looking at that to see whether or not it made sense, because at that point in time, I really wasn't sure about the tax digest and how that would come in, and, you know, how creative we were gonna be. I think Commissioner Flynn, one of his questions was, you know, does it make sense, or does it make sense to pay off some debt? Some debt we can pay off, some we can't, we're concluding from, so we're gonna talk about that. And then the building inspection fund, over the last several years, we built up a pretty hefty fund balance, close to a million dollars, and we've been drawing that down. But, and again, it's planned to propose to use that next year's budget. But a year from now, we either will have to look at increasing some fees in that area, or shift some expenses around, and I want to make sure everybody understands what's going on with the building inspection fund. So Tamara, you know, start with the question.
Okay. So the fire fund, in total, the overall expenses in the fire fund actually reduced by $500 between fiscal year 19 and fiscal year 20. So there were a lot of areas that went up, and there were a lot of areas that were cut, so we were able to get the costs very close to what they were last year. The overall fire fund budget is just over $10.1 million a year. So, the reason that we had to fund, there are four reasons why we had to fund with fund balance this year, and we did not in the past. The first reason was the insurance premium tax. The fire fund used to get around $265,000 of that. The entire insurance premium tax was put into the police fund to fund that this year, so that was a reduction in revenue for the fire fund of around $270,000 to $265,000. The second reason was there was $175,000 worth of career track for the fire department this year, so that caused an increase in personnel cost of $175,000 in addition to the COLA that everybody's got. The SAFER grant also caused a $70,000 increase this year. So the SAFER grant is structured so that the first, it's a three-year grant, the first year and the second year, the county pays 25% of the cost, and the third year, I believe the, it is 65%, but I'll have to verify that number. So in fiscal year 19, our SAFER cost was $172,000 additional personnel dollars that the county funded. In fiscal year 20, that cost is going up to $242,000 that the county is paying, and in fiscal year 21, that cost is going up to $252,000. However, in fiscal year 21, this grant ends at the end of March. So what that means is, at the end of March, those 15 SAFER fire positions would have to be eliminated, so that we did not have those continued costs of around $60,000 a month for those positions. If those positions are not eliminated at the end of March in fiscal year 21, the cost to the county would go up significantly, because we would bear 100% of the cost of those 15 firefighters at that point.
Is there any other grant that would replace that?
Um, I'm not sure if you can, can you get the SAFER grant for multiple back-to-back years, or is it a one-time?
It's possible. I would agree with SAFER grants a full time, but I don't know if she could continue them.
He said that there is a possibility that where he came from, they did three SAFER grants back-to-back, so there is a possibility that we can get it again, but of course, that's not guaranteed. Can definitely have Monica look into that to see where we stand before we get close to the end. That way, we can determine what we need to do.
How much is the total amount of the grant, or if we had to bear the total amount?
For the 15 firefighters, what the total cost would be? So these are 15 new positions that were added with the approval of this grant. It does not pay for positions that we currently have had before the grant, but the total amount of the grant and the county match across the life is just over $2 million. So the federal grant portion is 1.27 million, and the county match portion is 795,000 over the three-year period.
Okay, let me, so what's the cost per year, I guess is what?
Well, it just depends on the year, because of the percentage, because the percentage changes every year what we have to pay.
Well, let me ask this way.
Okay.
15 firefighters being eliminated sounds like a lot to me, so is that gonna impact our having a safe community? If we got, we're eliminating 15 fire positions.
So, I wasn't here when the grant was approved, but my understanding was that this was used as a hiring tool to try to get more firefighters, because you have a lot of turnover in firefighters, so the hope was that we could hire in, get people trained, use this grant funding to help, and then go back to the original staffing levels of, if I'm understanding correctly, back to the original staffing levels before the grant. I will say that although we added 15 firefighter positions, we have had vacancies throughout the life of this grant, so we really haven't had 15 more firefighters on staff. We've had 15 more positions, but there have been vacancies in other positions as well, so it's kind of evened out on the number that we have on staff, but the chief could give you a lot more specifics on that and the impact to the safe community if those positions were eliminated.
Yeah, I would like to hear where we would be.
As he's walking up, maybe I could just say, my recollection is similar, Tamara, that when we agreed to take on the money, the grant, the hiring new officers, it wasn't like we had a, you know, critical need at that time. It was, as you suggest, bring new, fresh, younger people, train them with the use of the grant, and move forward from that, and my understanding was, chief, there might have been the anticipation of a significant enough attrition during that period of time, that these new 15 positions would just fill attrition, and we'd stay basically firefighter-neutral through the program, and not end up with 10 to 15 more firefighters we had before with that significant budget increase. Am I misremembering, as Roger Clemens said?
It is. I wish I could tell you, you were. The intent, my intent, was always to add 15 personnel for safety. Actually, the year before, I requested 30 in a SAFER grant. The department is understaffed as it is. Traditional standards, throughout an area, three-man engines. We're running two-person engines in a lot of places, so the loss of 15 people would hurt. However, I did make the statement during the grant, there is no requirement to retain those 15 positions, so that may be where this is coming from. I would, of course, prefer to keep them. It does add to the safety of the community. Can I give you a dollar figure? No. Can I tell you it will affect the ISO? No, because we were rated on our last number of personnel. What I will tell you is that we have enhanced the safety, we have enhanced the staffing at stations, and we're actually looking at adding another ambulance, at least on a day truck, based on this to enhance services.
I guess my concern is that we got the grant, but we also invested this several hundred thousand dollars as our match in the training, and then to see them go somewhere else with our investment, and we still got to replace those positions, so...
I don't, I don't think it's simple, they're necessarily gonna go someplace. I think, I think I heard what Richard Murphy heard.
That's three of us.
But anyhow...
I heard attrition in that.
Yeah.
Attrition in that conversation.
Yeah, we'd bring them in, and what I thought I was hearing, we'd bring them in with the help of this grant, and then over time, by the time we worked through the grant period and all, and through attrition, it was just, they're gonna stay, they're trained, they're gonna stay here. But anyhow, I think that, I think it's probably gonna work where if the grant runs out, we don't have any more grant money coming in, we're gonna have to look at that for probably two years down the road, right?
In March of '21, so for next year's budget.
And how much would the salaries have to go up to meet that, you said, $770,000 a month?
It would be around $2.5 to $3 million.
Well, only depending on...
If, yeah, if we kept the 15.
Without, if we kept the 15 positions...
Sorry, that's the three years.
Yeah.
So about a million dollars.
A million dollars a year.
But that's only if they are not replacing any positions, right? My concern is we got experienced people that we may lose, but if we have some folk, somebody retired, and they're moving into a retired person slot...
That is correct.
Then it would work the way we originally intended, and so that amount may not be a million dollars.
It may not be 15 people.
Right, right, right.
We also have to, we also have to realize during the same time period, our overtime has been drastically reduced, and it's because of the additional people. At the time of the grant, we had 17 vacancies plus than the additional grant. We've actually hired 69 people. I have a confirmed number on that in the past three years. Now, the one issue that will come up if the positions aren't retained, of the 69 people hired, probably 30 of them are required to become paramedics, and we're training paramedics right and left. All of those are younger people that will be let go. That will then increase my paramedic overtime on the general side, or on the EMS fund side. So it's a two-edged sword. Can I, can I say we need the people? Yes, because they're dual-certified, they're paramedic or advanced EMTs and firefighters. Do they affect the safety of the county? I can't definitively say, because I don't have the statistics. My gut feeling is they absolutely do.
So let me ask you this, chief. I brought this up at our retreat, and you were not present, but, you know, as I try to become sort of self-educated on this fire protection fund in the district, we apparently have a relatively large area of our county that doesn't pay into that, doesn't pay a millage for fire protection, and the belief is that if they call for fire issues, by the time your men got out there, their house would be burned to the ground, so they shouldn't have to pay for the fire protection, you know? But they're also getting EMS services and a lot of other services. What's the truth behind that sort of old, kind of apocryphal tale that these houses are burning down before your men can get there? How many houses have burned down in Glen County before your men could get there that were outside of the fire protection district?
I don't have...
Zero or 50?
I don't have a specific number, however, the statistics that I have show that we've had about 14 structure fires. We've had 94 fires, period, in the last five years in that tax district. 25 car fires. Now, those 25 car fires could be in a garage. We don't know that, without the, because I don't have access to the old data, we've changed, we've changed record systems. How many of these fires in those districts would have burnt the house down had we not gone and stopped the grass fire, had we not stopped the fire in the neighbor's home, had we not stopped a car fire that was in a garage or a carport? It is, these people do receive service, they do receive fire protection, they are in an area to where our response time is extended. Response time, on average, in District Two is about twice as long as it is to the areas that we serve. They do, however, they do receive a benefit from the fire department. The Assured Services Organization says a Class 10 area has absolutely no fire protection, and as they drop down the numbers, there's a percentage decrease. The entire county is to 3X or a Class 9, so they do receive a benefit of having a career fire department with a Class 3 rating.
So what are the real numbers behind twice as long? Tell me what your usual response is and what their response is. Tell me what your usual response is and what their response time is.
Their response time to all structure, to all fire incidents was right at fourteen minutes throughout the county, depending on exactly the location. We're anywhere between four and a half and seven minutes to have a full response on scene. If we look in the Sterling area, if we go out, if we go west of Sterling, it takes us for every day to get there. It's twenty-minute responses. So, that area, that area does indeed, it needs a fire station. It can't support a fire station, not enough call volume. Other areas, our Station Six area down at Exit Twenty-Nine, has some long runs. We had a structured fire yesterday, and we're on top of it in a matter of about four minutes. So, it's hard to, it's hard to determine exact times. I can only give you averages right now, and it is fourteen minutes throughout the entire district. Given a month to resource the data, because we have to pull it back out of old data, I can give you exact times per neighborhood.
Chief, the ISO requirement for protected fire protection is within five miles responding to the fire department. Do you have any idea how much, how much ground in Glen County would be outside that five-mile requirement?
I don't, but what the requirement actually says is to receive a class-three rating. They have to be within five miles and a thousand feet of a hydrant. Anyone outside of that is a class-three X, which is a class-nine. They're still off of protection. I cannot tell you how much area it is, because we have area that falls within the five-mile area that doesn't have a water supply. Geographically, it's a huge portion of the county.
And those people pay out the nose insurance.
Well, yeah, I was gonna, after all this question, I was gonna ask you if you know what the effect of not being in what we call a fire zone has on an individual's homeowner insurance versus somebody's homeowner insurance instead of a fire zone. Do you have any idea what it does?
I can't give you the percentages. I will tell you that there is a discount for every one of the county, because there is a career department that's a three-X or a class-nine, even in our worst areas. As to class-three, which is most of the inhabited areas, the insurance agencies will not tell you, Mr. Coleman, they will not tell you what discounts you get for the classifications if we call.
But before you showed up, the insurance, the insurance, at least here in Glen County, and you remember, probably in 2000, in, maybe fourteen, in the outlined parts of the county outside of what they call the five-mile zone, we had insurance hold everybody's homes the way up, because they started enforcing ISO standards on fire protection coverage. It's not a question whether you have coverage or not, because people interpret, people will say that, well, if you call the fire department and they respond to your house, you've got fire protection. Well, if your house is, you know, was savable within five minutes of the call, if they got there, you might have had real fire protection. But if you're fifteen, twenty minutes from it, it's gone. You really ain't got fire protection, and that's what we're talking about.
And the water source, too.
And the key, he just said, too, we have areas that need fire stations. We know that, and we don't have the money to put them out there. So, people out in part of the county where I live, I'd argue with them, they really don't have fire protection.
What about the EMS portion of that, chief? I mean, that's part of the fire protection district, isn't it?
No, that's a separate fund.
Okay. And do all these areas in the county pay for that also?
Yes. Just to let you know, if District Two was charged the same fire millage rate as everyone else, it would only create seventy-eight thousand dollars more in fire fund revenue, which would not even come close to balance in the fire fund budget.
That's a good number. That's good, I was asking, I was gonna ask that. So, that doesn't cover the million-dollar a year cost of the additional salary.
Now, let me say this. I looked at District Two. See, the tax districts don't align with commission districts.
Right.
Okay. There may be, well, in fact, I'm pretty sure there are some areas in Tax District Two where folks probably should be taxed in the fire tax, because we do have, if I'm not mistaken, I think Disturbing, Disturbing Fire Department and the Exit Twenty-Nine are in Tax District Two. But you have areas...
Huh? They don't pay their fine?
But, so you have homes that are really protected by those fire stations that are in Tax District Two, but you also, those fire stations have areas they can't get to for ten or fifteen minutes, which those folks shouldn't be covered.
Maybe we need to... What is the fund balance in the fire protection fund?
Before the FY20 budget, it is...
You'll see on the side, can't hear.
It's four point five, almost four point six million. So, if the budget as is, is approved, it'll bring it down to around four million dollars in budget, in fund balance.
Fund balance, thank you.
Have we looked at the possibility of grant funds from USDA because that part of the county is within, some of their grant fund programs, they qualify for USDA, and that will help us either build a facility, build a fire station through a grant or a very low interest loan. Because at some point, we're gonna have to have, because we'll have a population really for you, but...
I don't know, but I'll be glad to check with Monica and see. I know that she researches all of the available grants and tries to find ways that we could fit those into our needs, but I will ask her to look into that.
I mean, you're talking about a revenue source of seventy-eight thousand dollars. I mean, I guess my question is, how you going on a fire station for seventy-eight thousand dollars? That's the total amount of revenue you're gonna generate from that district?
Yeah, that's why you don't get one.
But if your fire station was free, you still gotta run it.
Well, but we're still providing services out there, and I guess I would just like to know, because at some point, we may have to look at that.
You know, depending on how critical the patient is out in area two getting that, I mean, we say we provide EMS service, but you know, time's a big factor in getting somebody to the hospital. You know, you spend, you know, if you own up and up that can of worms, talk about it, you know, if it takes you, looks like Tax District One, you can get somebody picked up, carried to the hospital pretty quick. You gotta go over here, those folks may be dead by the time you get to them and tip. What kind of service is that?
It's certainly gonna cost more to go away out there.
That might be me.
We gonna take our time on that one. Let's stop and get gas. Go stop and get a cheeseburger on the way.
Cheeseburger. What item are we on?
Cheeseburger.
So, just to finish off for the fire fund, we just wanna make sure that y'all are aware that that's not a sustainable, long-term option for funding fire. So, we're at six hundred thousand use of fund balance for this coming year.
Well, it sounds like one thing we got to do is look and make sure the fees are right. I don't know when the last time we looked at the fees.
It's millage.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, there's no fees to the millage.
What was the millage? Yeah, we may have to look at that, and then, did you explain why we transferred money from the fire fund to the police fund? See, that was one of the first things you mentioned. You know, we...
Yeah, we did.
Two, three hundred thousand dollars over?
It was, well, it was not transferred from the fire fund. We just did not give the fire fund the insurance premium tax revenue in next year they normally had. We used that insurance premium tax to balance their fund in the past, and we did not give them that revenue. We gave it to the police fund for next year.
Does that money normally go to the fire fund?
It goes to, it's split, so it just goes wherever it's needed. So, in the past, the fire fund has received some. Sometimes it's two hundred thousand, sometimes it's, you know, fifty thousand. It just depends on how much they need to balance their fund.
Well, telling us how you handle the money, that's important. But you guys have a better idea why we had to do that and what can we do in the future if it's gonna take board action, and what's the remedy for some of these things out? So, I think it's fair to say that the commissioners would like, we gotta find a solution for it, because we can't keep going this way.
We agree. She's giving us full warning.
Yes, so your options are, you increase your millage or you decrease your services. We don't have, as I've said earlier, we don't have a lot of fluff in the budget. We cut their budget this year significantly from what they originally asked for. They're hardly getting any capital. It's very tight. Now, I will say that of their operating budget, almost six hundred thousand of that is debt service on their fire trucks. So, if you all wanted to look at paying off the fire trucks, that would save them approximately six hundred thousand dollars a year in the fire fund.
Well, that's one of the things that's gonna be on that list you all are gonna generate.
How much is that?
The...
Paying off the fire truck.
Debt service.
If you look at the last page, it's the items, it's row, I didn't number them, but row number three and four, we owe one point nine and two point one on those two fire truck leases.
So, what's the debt?
Annual payments, two eighty?
The annual payment is...
Over five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's almost six hundred thousand.
So, we could pay off that four million?
That, if you wanted to use all of the fund balance in the fire fund, you could pay off their debt, their outstanding debt with that fund balance.
And then, how much fund balance would they have? Zero?
Zero.
Right.
Which is, it's not, is not good.
That's the point. And the other thing, as we talked about earlier, we've got this salary boogeyman facing us in a year or so. It's gonna be, as you said, a million dollars a year, unless we're able to find some money from another grant.
I know that this is, I'm just throwing this out here, but the general fund does have undesigned fund balance, and you could use a portion of that. And we could do a calculation that says of the total fund balance, we would, or the total debt payoff, we would have the fire fund pay a portion and the general fund pay a portion, so that would be another option as well if you all wanted to use that undesigned fund balance. So, the nineteen million in undesigned is not part of the rainy day fund. That is part, that is, that is separate.
And that rainy day fund is thirty million?
Yes.
Do we have that thirty million?
We do not have the whole thirty million. We're still waiting on the Irma night back.
And how much is that, about twelve million?
Yes.
Do we think we'll get it this year?
We do.
Of course, we thought that last year, did we?
We are, we are close. We are waiting to finish the final appeal. I think that we're responding to that letter this week, and what's in question is about eight hundred thousand. The rest of the money is ready for us as soon as we sign the letters, we can get that money. So, we hope to have that cleared up very soon.
Yeah, I thought, talking about paying off debt, I mean, just looking at these, it's a pretty aggressive interest rate on those fire trucks. You know, you're looking at almost a hundred basis points more on the library bond. I mean, what's, that's, you know, a million four. We don't pay off something, we ought to pay off the pawn shop before we pay off the...
Pay off the...
Pawn shop, I mean.
The higher interest rates.
That's where I'm at, making the pawn shop. Pay off those higher interest rates first.
You asked that, but I'm warning myself. Well, yeah, if we could have a game plan about how to overcome some of these...
I tell you, I'm eliminating parking meter whenever we can. I just...
I agree with you.
I just think, you know, it's just...
But even, you know, even paying off one fire truck, because, I mean, about two million dollars a piece, we get it.
But if you're gonna pay off a fire truck, why wouldn't you pay off the one point four million dollar library bond at three point five eight? I mean, you're gonna have three point six.
Well, they have some money in their fire. I mean, I was just...
Money, money. We can move money from the general fund, I mean, it's...
Yeah, no, I agree. I agree that it's gonna be better for us to pay off the higher interest.
Question is, are they really gonna move the needle? You know, I mean, it looks to me like we have, since we're going on to the other item, are we done with fire? Are we done with fire?
That's to y'all.
So, if we're really looking at, you know, what debt we can pay off, and we can't pay off the bottom three, because they're not eligible, looks to me like we've got about almost ten million dollars of principal remaining that we can pay off, and the annual payments are roughly one point five million dollars. So, if we pay off half that debt, we, you know, we save seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. I mean, you know, that's real money, but in a budget of a hundred and thirty-two million dollars, or an operating fund of seventy-two to seventy-five million dollars, does that really move the needle? You know?
Well, the money's sitting there making nothing.
So, you're talking about the nineteen million dollars then?
The money's making around two and a half percent, because I'm doing, I'm investing it, so it is making some money.
So, you got a one point...
You're gonna buy some penny stocks for it.
We're about breaking even on the fire fund and the general fund. We're not breaking even.
Tamara, have you looked at the investing, something through the state? The city has done that, and they took quite a bit of their funds out, and it's increased. Instead of them getting a hundred dollars, they were getting like sixty-seven thousand.
So, we...
I don't know if the hundred dollars is there.
We used to invest in the Georgia Fund One, which is their estate. We have taken most of our money out of the Georgia Fund One, and we're investing in allowable stocks and not, it's not stocks. It's securities and treasuries and CDs that are backed by the FDIC is what our, what our investment policy allows. So, it's very conservative investments. We're earning around two and a half percent on those investments, and those are just, you know, we have them laddered at different maturities. I have a lot that comes due around the hurricane season, so that we have a lot more cash available, and then after hurricane season, we invest that again.
Who's helped you with those decisions? Is there a committee?
So, the, we have an investment policy that tells me exactly what we're allowed to invest in. So, it's US Treasuries, bank FDIC insured CDs, and I believe that's about it. It's very, very limited, so I'm not making stock decisions. I'm not, you know, investing in things like that. It's separate from like our pension investments.
So, why do we start with the Georgia one?
Because they were only paying around one and a half percent, so we actually increased our investment earnings last year significantly by moving to the, the separate investment options.
Chairman, would it be worthwhile to address this maybe on a separate time, and let's look at what we've got, what rate we got invested at, how much money we owe, what if we pay it off? I mean, and look and see what's the difference in the cash flow, and as Peter said, what moves the needle and what doesn't matter. But I mean, we're just sort of swinging at this thing right now.
But also, you know, what really are the necessary reserves for a coastal community like ours to be protected? Because I've heard the stories of past years when it was said, you know, we've got such a robust reserve fund, let's spend it down if we ever get hit by a hurricane, because they hadn't been hit by a hurricane. Of course, FEMA will pay us right back, and there'll be no problem. But guess what? You gotta have the cash ready to pay the people to pick up the trees, and then it may be... And then it may be a couple of years before the government pays you back, so...
This ought to be all part of that, that conversation.
No question, I'm just throwing that piece in. And I don't know the answer to that.
I know me either, but I think we all...
And the other thing is, we've got that thing called the Coleman lawsuit. The people who come back when we reset their base year, want some refunds on their taxes that couldn't run up of 5 billion dollars plus. Where's that coming from? Is that going to come from the undesignedated fund balance or does that come from the rainy day fund?
Why don't we focus on our internal numbers? And I think staff is best prepared, I say prepared, they're, they're, they should know what items maybe we should pay off, knowing the interest we're paying, if there's any penalties, what we can't touch, uh...
So if you look at, if you look at page four...
You should be able to come up with something.
The first four items on the list are items that we are able to pay off. The last three are items that we cannot pay off early without penalty. So my recommendation would be to pay off the first four and save the interest. Now, over the long run, it's going to, you know, save you three, about a million dollars in interest. But year to year, you're not looking at a huge savings. So it really depends on if you wanted to keep that fund balance. And I will say for, for the hurricanes, you know, the, both of the hurricanes that hit here were pretty minor hurricanes and they cost us 10, 11, 12 million dollars. So if we got hit with a major hurricane, it's going to cost a lot more than 12 million dollars.
Then we have, really.
Well, I mean, it could be totally catastrophic. But i- if we had this catastrophic event where we needed 30 million dollars, we go to the bond market.
But we can get tans, can't we?
We'll go to, we'll go to AmerisBank and get a loan. It wouldn't be a bond, it wouldn't qualify as a bond, but we get a tan, tax anticipation.
Yeah, and what kind of rate could we anticipate?
Whatever the market is, and it's probably fairly low, 2 or 3 percent.
2 or 3 percent?
Today.
I think these are things we all sit down and discuss, this is, we're talking about some big numbers here. And, 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 you know, we don't talk a lot about it.
The other thing you have to consider is, i- if we did get hit by what Mexico Beach got hit with category five, it's a game changer.
Oh, absolutely.
Because, because then county government changes. Because our tax base, a lot of it has been eliminated.
Yeah.
So therefore, it's not just about tree removal, okay? It, it's about restructuring our community, restructuring county government. So, uh, I mean, it's just, it's not...
There's probably not a whole lot we can do for...
You, you can't today, but at that time, it's, it's just understood that you had the cleanup effort and that sort of thing, but then you had the restructuring effort. So it's just game changer, hopefully we never have to have the conversation.
Well, we'll take a look.
I think it's good to have the conversation, though, I mean, it'd be good to look into it further.
Oh, I'm far, I, I would say, I'd say look at, look at some things that we might can do, um, you know.
Well, this thing's gone from paying off a few loans here to something catastrophic.
No, but I mean...
We ought to look at all in the same context.
But, but all these, all these loans, I mean, there's only five, you said four, did you mean five?
Five.
Okay.
No, 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 no.
No, there's only four. The, the fifth one is, um, split with the city for email. So they would actually have to agree to pay off their portion as well.
So is their portion half of it or...
25 percent.
Okay, so let's say it takes, the, the total, total amount of debt that we could pay off is roughly 9 million dollars. It would save us roughly, say, 1.4 million dollars of interest and a principal payment every year. You know, it's not like we've got robust reserves. Uh, that, that's my only concern.
Yeah, but I think a lot of it, though, is just taking the mentality of, okay, let's, let's look at everything and see where, where we can find some savings because the revenues are probably going to be flat going forward. We're not going to see the increases we've seen in the last five years. So it's going to require us to look, I think, look at everything and ask questions.
So that's, that's what I'm saying, we're looking at it right here. What else, do, do other people here think that there's other expenditures we're making that we can cut?
Let's, let's keep in mind, I believe the reason we really got to talking more about this is because we have some problems with our police fund and our fire fund going forward. That's why we're even talking, I think that's why we're talking about, maybe we need to pay off some fire trucks. Because, um, if, if we do that, what is that going to do to the police fund, the fire fund going forward? I mean, we simply got a problem.
It's not going to affect the police fund.
See, 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 I mean, if it's not going to...
It's going, it's going to save the fire fund approximately 600,000 a year.
I think that's the context we're talking about this.
I get that. The only question I'm making, David makes the point of, let's look at everything. I think this is everything unless somebody's looked at the budget, as I've said for the last two and a half years, that I have. And I don't think there's a lot of fat in the budget. I don't think there's a lot of budgetary mismanagement, fiscal mismanagement, directorship mismanagement. But that's been said by others. So I'm just here to say, is there anything more than these four and a half items or four and three quarters items that we're looking at?
Yeah, how much reserve do we need in the fund?
Well, no, no, I'm talking about cuts. You know, what are the cuts we're talking about? I mean, 9 million dollars?
This isn't cuts, I mean, this is restructuring our debt.
I get that, I get that.
I mean, and, and does it help us in our, from year to year? Does it, how does it affect, I mean, it's got several different causes to it.
It'd be a 1.4 million dollar cut every year.
I think 1.4 is a lot of money.
But it costs us 9 million dollars from our reserve fund, that's the only question.
Well, I mean, that's a discussion that we might have.
There you are.
From the bank.
I mean, if, if that, if you're comfortable with that, I'm not going to argue against it, I'm just, you know, raising the point.
How much do we have in the reserve?
Um, once we receive our money from FEMA, we'll have 30 million dollars in the rainy day fund and around 19 million dollars in the undesignedated. Um, right now, we have about 15 million dollars, 16 in the rainy day fund. I think we're, we're waiting, I, I don't remember exactly, I think we're waiting on 11 or 12 million from, from FEMA right now.
So basically, we have 19 undesignedated. And if we use that to pay this stuff off, we'd have 10 or 9. And knowing that we can, if we need to go get it. I say we look at it, um, but we, we also need to, um, look at revenues. And, uh, since we can't seem to get in about on that committee we formed, we need to become the committee and maybe work with the staff, have to come up with some other revenue options.
See, seeing tomorrow, you know, put together these numbers in a little chart. Maybe these off. Here's what's going to happen, police fund, fire fund, um, payments, here's total, how much payments we're not... If you got, if, if it's one scenario, give us the max, or if there's a couple of different scenarios in there. And then, and then what the, the undesignedated fund, if we deplete it by half, what, what we lose there? And balance, I mean, just, just, we can look at the numbers then and have a more intelligent discussion, make a more informed decision.
And I, and I think that everything that you're asking is actually on here, but I, I'll be glad to provide it in a different format.
I don't, I don't see there's anything more we're talking about than right here. And it comes down to Mr. Hours, you know, the undesignedated fund balance. Historically, what has been done with that? Does it just sit in a 2 percent CD or do we actually use that for things that come up unexpectedly? Capital expenditures we hadn't anticipated?
All of the above. A few years ago, that, uh, we were over at 50 million dollars total fund balance and the board, um, I think we had about 25 million in undesignedated fund balance and, and the board said, you know, we've got some, it was in between Splosh, we've got some capital projects that we, uh, we need to do. And, and the board, uh, chose, they said, we're going to spend it down to about 15. And, uh, we actually spent it down because during the, well, during the recession, we, on paper, balanced the budget with, we never had to use it for operations. But it came down to about nine. Uh, last year, we added 5 million dollars to the fund balance. Our, our goal is, is to add to it every year. So we, we've used it for capital projects. It's, uh, the, the board last couple of years has really not, chose to use it for anything. We've wanted, uh, to be there if, uh, not if, but when we have to write a check for the Coleman lawsuit, that would be my recommendation where to get it from. Economic development, if Ryan Moore comes to you and says, Commissioners, I have an, an awesome project, but I need a little incentive money, well, that'd be a good place to take it from. So, you know, there's multiple uses, you don't want to spend it all down. You want to have, um, 10 or so million in there for the, when the Ryan Moore, Moores come to you and say, I need, need some help. But, uh, gives you some flexibility, but, uh, it's just a combination.
Well, the other thing is, if we're not successful with Splosh 2020, I would say that that fund's going to be vulnerable for capital projects because they're going to be there. And we're not going to have the money from the best source in the world, the visitors, to pay for it.
Doing very little capital this year.
Yeah.
Um, so if Splosh 2020 is not loaded back in, the capital is going to see a huge hit.
Well, again, I hope that we can figure a way to make sure the fire department has trained firemen that we're invested in. And that's what this started for me, to make sure that, um, our fire department is fully staffed with experienced people.
So I, um, did pull up the memo that went to the board with the passing of the St. Per grant and it says in here, minimum staffing levels will not be increased with the addition of these personnel. Substantial, substantial reduction over time will result.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
So the next fund we need to, um, mention too is the building inspection fund. I briefly mentioned that earlier, but Mary's going to go in more detail.
All right, so, um, the building inspection fund, as you know, that we took that out of the general fund this year and put it into its own fund. And those, that fund is funded by building inspection fees that are charged for services. Uh, we are using fund balance this year to budget that fund. Sorry, I'm going to tell you how much real quick. Um, we're using 239,000 dollars of fund balance to balance that fund. Um, in the past, we have had more fees coming in than our costs, but there have been several new things that have been brought forward to use that money for to help increase the efficiency of the department, such as new softwares that are user friendly for the citizens to be able to apply and get, and get the items that they needed. So with those new softwares, um, and also there is a new position that's being funded in, with that, that was approved in FY19 for condemnations. So overall, that's why we have more expenditures in that fund than, than revenues. So that'll be something we need to look at. Um, Pam has a few things that she can say about that.
Good afternoon, Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. I am not the attorney or the finance director, so I will in layperson's terms tell you what this fund is and what we use it for. So building inspection is not an enterprise fund, but it operates like one. State law allows us to charge user fees to people who come in and get applications and inspections to cover the cost of the entire operations of the department. Those funds can only be spilled, spent in the building inspections fund. So any year where we have more revenues than we have expenditures, we take that, those excess funds and put it in this building inspections fund balance. You can let that build up to make larger purchases, such as the new software we bought this year or vehicles, but it must all be spent on building inspections. There's no state requirement for how big that can get, but if the fund gets too large, the state may come look and see if you're charging too much in your user fees and make you figure out how to refund that money back and lower your fees. So the goal is to be fair and cover the cost of doing business. So during the recession, we had really made sure to not hit that fund. And then the economy got good and we were doing more inspections and more building. So I have come to you this past year and we have spent that fund down. And that was the same, um, reasoning we took with the budget this year. That being said, we do plan to work with our internal auditor and the revenue committee to look at all of our building fees because, um, to make sure that they're fair and that they are covering our costs. We have some permits that are base permits that cost 30 dollars and we have to make three trips out to inspect the property. So 30 dollars does not cover three car trips, the gas and the inspection fee. So we do need to make adjustments, a lot of the fees are probably fine. But you work to try to have that balance where the revenues you're getting in are covering your cost. So, um, that's our plan for the year. I feel comfortable that, I, I'm not the accountant, but I feel comfortable that we still have a safe amount in our fund balance if something were to happen to our department and we needed to, um, to make an expenditure. But, um, that's the plan moving forward is to keep a fund balance, but to not let it get too large, but to make sure that it is there in case we do have a, a drop off in the building, um, industry. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
What's the fund balance now?
Helen, if we are successful in implementing impact fees, where does that money going to go?
It's set aside for specific purposes, so the impact fee, what...
Oh, that's right, yeah, you got, I was thinking that.
Yeah, what it, what it does is, it, it pays for costs as a result of the development, costs of infrastructure. So, you know, you have a bucket and, um, and, or different buckets within the fund. You put it in those buckets and then at some point in time, you make the capital expenditure.
So we go into capital project here.
Commissioner Neal, while she's looking for that number, I can tell you that it was over 800,000 dollars at the beginning of the fiscal year and...
Um, with this budget, if this budget is approved, that will be 148,000 left in fund balance, not counting anything that is gained in FY19.
And we are currently running revenues over our current expenditures. Um, so what we purchased this past year, three replacement trucks, uh, new field soft, new field computers, new computers for the office, new telephones and those two new software systems that will allow more efficient and effective inspection services, review services and make us more customer friendly. So that's what we've spent the month...
Do you see, do you see any more purchases of those nature or anything of those?
No, sir, and these were large, they were kind of past due and we went ahead and bid it off. So, um, if you go out there, every telephone's brand new, every computer's brand new, every, um, laptop in the field is brand new. So we're not going to be needing to make those for several years.
So would you anticipate that that fund balance will start growing, growing again after, and growing?
Yes, yes, sir. I do think we need to look at the fees we charge just to make sure we're covering every inspection that we do. But, um, yes, I do expect it to. And again, Tamara is who you need to lean on for all of the dollars and math that happens, but I think we're going to return some this year to the fund balance.
Okay.
The budget for FY20 for building inspections does not include any capital, large purchases. So the use of the 268 or 38, um, is, is just for the operations of that department. There, the software annual costs contributed to most of that increase. Also, I have an answer for you on the library career. Um, they originally had 38,000 budgeted and it's going to be 44,000.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'm just anxious to hear, you know, probably might, I, I guess it's, it would affect the millage on the fire fund and the police fund.
You don't have the other option between millage and cut services, that's, those are not very good.
Well, you either have to spend less or get more. I mean, that's just the way that money works. I don't know what other options you have.
Can't, can't we print more? Can we just print more?
Print it out.
You don't, you don't call the government because they just...
My daughter used to say, just print a little ATM and let it pour out.
Write a check. Um, if you look at the bottom of your, um, sheet there, I just detailed out for you the changes to the original budget... the original budget that we presented to you. So in the General Fund, we're looking at $137,000 increase in expenditures and revenues for what we've presented to you today. In the Capital Projects Fund, 474,000, with, with that being the generators and the pickleball courts. And then in the Drug Court Fund, $6,000 in, in grants funding.
Is that here?
From staff, we're prepared to answer any questions at the board now.
Big Commissioners, we're at the bottom of it.
I apologize for being late, Mr. Chairman. We, we did approve the $150,000 for the pickleball courts, I hope.
It's in there.
You weren't here, so the vote went down in defeat. So I'm going to have them all write emails to you tonight.
To me.
So let me just make, you know, Alan, I, just before we started, I was talking to the Tax Commissioner about the accuracy of some of his assessments that are going out. I don't know if you all have gotten calls about it, but I have, and my own assessment, I questioned the accuracy of it. And I think they're going to be flooded with phone calls and visits downstairs. And I talked to Attorney Mumford about this beforehand. You know, we've got 17,000 properties or so affected by the Scarlett Williams Homestead Act. Supposedly 7,000 or so, those may, the, the property tax may go up because a refreeze was done, and the current interpretation is a refreeze is not allowed. Now, there's also going to be several whose base year is reset, at which point their tax payments should go down. But in my own personal instance, I was expecting to see a difference in, in last year and this year, I didn't see one, and I've had similar calls from others. So I think confusion reigns out there, and I think people are thinking that the only recourse they have is to go downstairs and file an appeal, which I don't think is really appropriate, because we spent all this extra time and effort to create what was supposed to be an accurate 2019 Tax Digest, and I question whether we've got an accurate 2019 Tax Digest. Am I the only one that?
No, I think the thing is, that is confusing, is this is the appraised market value that they sent all these assessments out. And they're really not applicable to what you're going to get a tax bill for. And that is what is driving me crazy, because you're exactly right. Everybody's going to be running down there saying, I had, I had a homestead exemption. Why did my market value assessment go up? And.
Why couldn't they have sent out a, why can't they send out a note that says, here's, here's your appraised market value, but here's your, your base year taxable value that, that we're going to assess your millage rate upon?
Yeah, that would have made a lot more sense. But I wasted 15 minutes of this lady's time downstairs, and she's, oh, you know, it's going to get the same thing.
Do you think they have those numbers? Because that's really what, what the Tax Digest is all about. It's not about some number that's out there that, the assessed value of a home. It's exactly what the Tax Commissioner is going to base his individual tax bill upon.
And that's the thing that scared me, was this 4% was predicated on that market value number, which went up, whatever, 60,000 dollars. And so, but that's not the case. Well, I, I would suggest that people do go, you know, to the Tax Assessor's Office. Whether by law they have a right to do an appeal based on this notice, I don't know. But.
Yeah, that's the one to notice.
I, I don't know what it was.
Don't you think between the county manager and county attorney, we can get something that, that reflects the true basis upon which an individual's tax bills are going to be calculated and get that out there so people know whether they need to file an appeal?
That's the thing. I mean. Let me, let me throw something in. It was the, the, and I don't want to sound like I'm throwing the Tax Assessor under the bus, but he really didn't want to say a whole lot about what, what was going on here. And I even had a conversation with him on the telephone. We need to get something out there that people think, I didn't know. He wanted the Tax Commissioner to do it. And I said, well, I think you should do that. You're the one that did all these numbers. And so I'm just giving you an idea, gentlemen. I'm just giving you an idea. There's a, I, I, I think he's hesitant about stepping outside of doing anything other than what he's done would get these notices met.
Well, if he's, if he's done the work to figure out what the true base year is, and he's done the work to know that those have gotten refreeze, by our current understanding, we're not eligible for those, he should have those numbers. And I think that would be the basis for our Tax Digest, and that's the basis upon which we would decide whether we're revenue-neutral, or our digest has gone up, or it's gone down significantly. For a while there, we're talking about being worried that our digest had gone down significantly, and the last couple of weeks, well, you know, we've actually done okay. Are we really sure we've done okay? Because I don't think the individual homeowner knows where he or she stands.
Dr. Murphy, all I can do is rely on the information that I provided. The growth in inflation, which includes this particular issue with the Scarlett Williams, increased by around 4% over last year. I talked with Mr. Kalison about the forms, and he told me that state law dictated what type of forms, you know, the format that he had to send out. He couldn't give that information. Said however, our staff's standing by the phones and ready to answer citizens' questions. But the form that he sent out, what he told me is that state law dictates the format. That doesn't mean that there couldn't have been another letter within the envelope trying to explain things, but, but I will certainly check with Mr. Kalison to see what's involved in sending out a different letter or statement with additional information that helps clear the picture.
For each individual homeowner, not just a general description of what they're doing.
No, 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 right.
Here's, here's the number upon which your, your 2019 tax bill is going to be computed.
He has the information.
Well, we don't have it.
There you go. There.
Look. You've got tire cracks.
My ears will burn.
It should be. It should be. But you did a good job.
I just wanted to.
How about the microphone there?
You want to sit down as a lower target.
I'm pretty low. But no, I just wanted to come in and try to answer any questions. A lot of stuff is going on, a lot of discussions before and after the fact. So I do my best to try to answer any questions y'all want to, hopefully start out with some softball questions before they get too difficult.
Okay, so the basis of the lawsuit is a re-establishment of the base year for people who've frozen, who've locked into the Scarlett Williams Homestead. Was that number accurately reflected in, in the letter that came out to all the Glen County taxpayers the other day?
Yeah, the assessment notices, that was accurate. The roughly, approximately 4% net included all the applicable exemptions. So is there, is there errors within, within it? Of course, there is, and we're, our offices, we're in the process of going through that information as we speak. Of the 17,000 plus, what we did was, we went through it initially, put the information in. The theory behind it was, go back from the base year, we go back prior year, void the re-locks. In some cases, there were multiple re-locks, and then we add back in the growth component. The growth component, we had to go in to each individual digest year, because of system limitations, it only, the, the growth aspect, you couldn't carry, growth would override inflation in the system. So we had to go into each individual year to calculate the growth aspect. So we go back prior, void any re-lock. And anytime you had a re-lock, it was a benefit to the taxpayer. And so that was, that was voided, and then adding in the growth, which was the most complex part of the equation. And when the, when the Finance Committee gave us, we took tasks to do in the job, and again, we're in this in conjunction with the Tax Commissioner. We're not, we're not, we're working together. It's, the, the job itself actually changed multiple times for various reasons. So how we ended up is our office was doing the overtime, and we were doing this after hours, before hours, and on weekends. Because as you went into the system, initially, we were going to go in to the, to the Tax Commissioner's office, and we were going to verify, in order to do the project accurate, we were going to verify that the Homestead exemption application date, and also the Scarlett Williams application date, have documentation put into the system. But we realized that the, the, the information that we started with was not in the system. So we had, we called a meeting with, with some folks and got together, and so we, we put the information, we deemed correct, what was in the system, and we moved forward with that. So we, we, the theory behind it stayed the same. Go back one year, avoid the re-locks, and add the growth in, and plug that number in for the 2019 digest. So we did, and, and on top of that, and I'll get questions again, we, we wanted to get a position from the County Commission as far as the re-locks. I think through the course of time, it took about a month and a half, and so that, that stalled us a little bit, but then we made up some ground with just staff doing just an unbelievable job. But the, the growth in inflation reports that were submitted, that's the net taxable value, 4% year versus year. And so it's a, you know, it's, it is what it is. It's no, it's just based on the information of all the, the stuff that was inputted.
Ron, if, if you have a home that Scarlett Williams is applied to, even after all these things that y'all have done, and I know y'all did a heck of a job over there, and had a lot to do. But if, if the value on this assessment notice is substantially higher on the notice than what it, what's on your latest tax bill, is that just a matter of fact of what the appraisal is today on that property, but, but your, but your taxes are still going to be pretty much at what they were?
Yes, so the, the assessment notice, we're dealing with fair market value. Some of the local state exemptions, the internal information of the, the net effect of your tax bill is, is, is not posted on the assessment notice. I know we had conversation about that. Thought about that conversation a lot. But, yeah, yeah, but it definitely, but, so that's not in there. I've had conversations, maybe let Aaron speak on some of the legal requirements of that. And also, I know we worked on letters to get out information to the taxpayers, and that was something we discussed, and the social media was an avenue that was utilized. And I also know that there had been some discussion as far as, on the radio as well.
Yeah. Ron, let me ask this question then. For those that are confident that their base year was okay, so Scarlett Williams shouldn't have had an effect on, you know, the review you all did, they didn't get a re-lock, and so they get their notice like everybody else did recently from your office, and say their property value went up, you know, a good bit. Can they still expect to see their taxes about the same, based on, you know, their Scarlett Williams, they had Scarlett Williams?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't take a chance. Anybody who has any questions whatsoever, and I know y'all are getting lots of calls, it sounds like. We're getting, I would say, average volume, just like we've gotten years past. We've got running totals as far as a daily rate on appeals, appeals count on a daily rate, and our appeals are running about the same that they've done. And I think that just, that's saying that the taxpayers, they get the assessment notice, and they don't put a lot of emphasis on it. They look at it, and it's about the same, and, and probably throw it in the trash. But when the tax bills come, you know, that's, that may be a different issue this year because of the Scarlett Williams or the L5 issue that we, we had with the Coleman versus Glen County.
Mike, what happens? I mean, this market value assessment is, is on there, but the amount of your tax is accurate. I mean, it, it's right. It, it's not applicable to the, to the assess, to the new assess market pack. And I assume that that's some state requirement in case you're Scarlett Williams, you sell your house, and then you're dealing with the market value. You're not dealing with Scarlett Williams anymore.
Well, see, that's what I'm.
But the, but the number at the bottom that you pay, which I think the taxpayers are most interested in, is, is right. It's exactly right. Exactly what it was last year. But the.
I'm just telling you. The assessment.
It should be right.
It should be.
It should be. But may not be, but it should be.
Let me ask you, you just said, it's exactly the same as it was last year.
The tax bill.
I understand that.
Okay.
But I, I disagree with that, because for those whose base year was set inappropriately by the previous Tax Commissioner, the valuation upon which they pay their tax bills might be significantly lower. Let's just, let me examine. So let's say Florence D. locked them in at 500, but actually, the previous year's base year was 400, they should have been paying 400 all this time. That's the basis of the lawsuit.
Right.
So Ron comes along and says, well, we've corrected all that. So what I'm saying is, 400 should be the basis upon which that person is paying their tax bill, and that's not reflected in this anywhere. And that is a problem, and here's the problem. You told me, at least if I heard you correctly, that for those taxpayers, when the bill comes in September, that 400 should be the basis of their tax bill. My question to you is, are they, what if it doesn't happen that way, and then they haven't gone in to file an appeal? Should all these people who, who see this higher valuation, knowing that it should be lower because they did not get appropriate fixation of their base year, should they be filing appeals with you guys, or just trust that the system somehow is going to be right?
Yeah, I would say, well, first off, in your scenario, 500,000, and your prior year was 400,000, assuming no re-locks, no growth, simple, yeah, simple.
Just somebody who just did.
Yeah, in our system, in our system, that we, the assessment notice we sent out, they reflect that change that we did. They reflect that. So, so are there errors?
It wasn't reflected.
In the estimated tax?
It didn't reflect it in the top-line valuation.
No, that's fair, because we're, we're.
I get that. I get that. But don't you think it would have been smarter to put something, a notice in there that, you know, you've got all these numbers down below with the millage rate for fire, and now police, and capital, you know, operating fund and all that? Would have been smarter somewhere in, in the envelope to say, you know, the basis upon which these taxes are being calculated is now 400 and not the 500.
Yes, I, I think, let me, let me, first off, the, the assessment notice is state-regulated.
I get that.
Okay, so there's no changes on that. That, in and of itself, that's a, a state form. There are wrinkles that, there are things you can do, but you got to get approval from the state if you change it in any capacity. We've tried that, and it's, it's a lengthy process. That was discussed. We've, we've had several meetings before, and that was, that was discussed. At the time the decision was made, we felt like getting out ahead of this with, with social media, on the radio, the media outlets, and also having anyone who has any questions to come in our office. And, and our staff, myself and our staff walked through, methodically walked through, because it's such a complex, it's such a complex situation, that was the decision that was made. And that was made in unison with, with, with the, the folks that were involved.
I want to agree with this.
Right, and, and that's open for discussion after the fact, but the decision at the time was made, and we're here, our doors are open, and anyone who has any questions pertaining to this, you know, I would, I would love for them to come in and, and, and let us walk you through the process, because it's such a complex, complex situation when you start getting into the multiple years of the, of this lawsuit, of the, calculating the estimated taxes.
Yeah, let me, let me throw in that I know everybody likes to be able to have a really easy something on there to look at and say, well, I can see, I can see this thing is working in my favor, or I understand what it is, and that may not.
And that may not be the case. It may not be the case, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't recognize, I don't know if anybody's been through anything like this, this Coleman case. And, you know, all the courtroom and lawyer stuff, that's one thing. But what Ron and his staff has done, I think has been a tremendous job. Probably first time you've been through something like this.
I believe so.
Yeah. And you hope it's the last. Yeah, we do too. But I just, before we get out of this room today and before Ron gets picked on anymore, I just want to pat him on the back and his staff because y'all have done a tremendous job. And of course, we couldn't have done it without you. But probably going to find out that they're more right than they are wrong. And that's not what we're here today to determine if you're right or wrong on it, but you did a great job. But there are some questions.
Yeah.
Questions. And that was my conversation to you that day was, you know, transparency is number one for us here. And because people ask us.
Yeah.
We get asked, I don't care if, I mean, if the garbage man didn't pick somebody's garbage up, they called me, I wanted nobody's garbage can to get picked up. Well, because I guess they miss you. But did he really pick it up? I don't know.
Right.
I have to call somebody.
Yeah.
So kind of work with us and commissioners, don't beat up on him anymore. I have beat up on him and he told us.
Yeah. Well, it's complex. Like I say, we want to, anybody, we want to welcome in and let's work through it because if we made a mistake, we want it to, you know, we want to make the correction. And I'm sure, you know, human error, with that much information in that short period of time, there's going to be some human error. So we want to definitely verify everything. So, and we're doing that now, leading into the digest, turning over to tax commissioner's office on, I think he's requested July one. So that's kind of our goal to go through and make sure we're going back through the process again.
So to be clear, if a Commissioner Murphy has a serious, you know, question about his bill, can he come in and sit down with you?
He would be welcome, yes, definitely.
Can he just work it, walk through it and see?
I'll tell you, the other group that's really causing a great deal of anxiety in our district, my district, is over on Sea Island with some of these very valuable homes that have had relocked.
No question.
They're going to really want to know what is the number upon which you are going to pass to the tax commissioner that they're going to be taxed.
Yeah.
Because that is a very complicated calculation.
And there's quite a few L fives on Sea Island. We met with their homeowners association. We're out in, we're out in front of that, Bill Bologe and the other gentleman. But yeah, we met with their homeowners association and the information's been passed to them. And also, they've given the letters that were written by Glen County. We've kind of a group effort. And so we're satisfied with the letter and they've got a copy of that. And we've talked to several of the Sea Island folks individually as well. So we're, we're, day by day, getting, trying to get past it. So.
Ron, appreciate you coming in.
All right, yeah, thank you. Thank y'all. Yep.
Thank you, man. All right. All right. Well, I think we're at the point where if you guys, as I say, don't have a whole lot of heartburn, we can move this thing to the regular meeting on June sixth. Sound good?
All right, it's good.
This meeting is adjourned.